Hello and welcome to the West Hartford County Council Virtual Debate, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Greater Hartford and West Hartford Community Interactive. I am Libby Sweetech, a member of the Greater Hartford League, and I am pleased to be joined here by Jennifer Evans and her staff of West Hartford Interactive. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation by its citizens and government. The League of Women Voters has provided timers and screeners for each candidate and questions that may be submitted by the audience. We encourage the audience to submit questions during the debate. They can be submitted through the Q and A function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. My screener is Cassie Backman. My timers are Nina Gero and Carol Moretti. This is one of four candidate debates. We were originally scheduled to do three, but we have added an extra debate in order to accommodate one of the participants who is on military active duty and cannot like be here. This debate will be conducted in a modified cumulative time. Each candidate will have a total of approximately eight minutes of response and rebuttal time. Closing remarks will also be limited to two minutes. Our timers will alert each candidate as their allotted time expires. Prior to airtime, a lottery was held to pick the responding order. And we will reverse that when we get to the closing arguments. So let me introduce the candidates. Going first will be Adrian Billingsmith, running as a Democrat. Going second is Leon Davidoff, also running as a Democrat and an incumbent on West Hartford Town Council. And third is Mark Merritt, running for a Connecticut Party. Questions will be asked in order of response. And once a question is asked, we're hoping to open the floor, trying to limit the time for each discussion to about two minutes or so, so that we can accommodate more than than four questions. Okay, let us begin. The first question will go to Adrian Billingsmith, and it has to do with money. How do you think the one-time COVID money coming to West Hartford should be spent?
Well, thank you for having me here today. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and WHCI for giving this opportunity. And I want to say thank you to my fellow panelists for being here and giving your time and putting your name in. When I think of where our money should go, I think it goes to our future, but also the present people who were affected by COVID, you know, our community, our resources. And I also think that we have to think, as they said before in the previous talk, we have to think about our future with this money and has to be earmarked by 2023. But when we do that, we can put things into our infrastructure, into our schools, into our communities, and really make sure the money goes somewhere. So I think that, you know, we have to make sure we're putting things into our community, but also making that money work for us in the future, public safety, education, and those sorts of things. So I think that we have to be very smart and strategic in the ways that we fund things with the money that we've been given from ARPA.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment? Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and WHCI for having this community discussion so that our residents can be better informed about the candidates and their positions. Thanks to President Biden and the foresight to come up with a plan, American Rescue Plan, to help communities like West Hartford deal with the social and economic impacts that the pandemic has caused our community and communities across America. So this Thursday, there will be a Finance Administration Committee meeting, of which I chair. We'll be talking about the priorities and the suggestions on how we're going to invest in our community. And I have read various articles about this. And it's interesting to note that the communities that invest in economic development and their infrastructure in their community in a decade's time will be looked at as success stories compared to those communities who just target and earmark the money for operating expenses. So I'm certain the way that West Hartford is such a well-run community, we will definitely be doing it so that the money that we have received from the federal government will have long-lasting impact on our community.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, Mark, I want to say thank you again for the League of Women Voters for hosting this along with Jennifer Evans and her team at WHCI-TV. For the opportunity again, as Leon and Adrian have said, it's an opportunity for the voters and our neighbors here in West Hartford to learn a little bit more about us and what we're thinking about and how we help. I think the American Rescue Plan is an opportunity for us as a town to look at strategically, as Leon mentioned, maybe from infrastructure items. But more importantly, how do we look and set those funds up where we're getting it in parcels now, next year, and then have to spend by 2023? And how do we help and look at our students and our school system with regards to needs falling behind potentially because of what COVID has impacted? And how do we provide the resources more to Tom Moore and community resource officers? And for Chief Riddick to help protect and be safe with what we're trying to do? I think it's an opportunity for us to come together and talk about some of these ideas and solutions that we can act upon and how it betters our town. Twenty-five million was given to the town and general funds, and we had ten million allotted for the Board of Ed. One of the things too also, it would be noted, is that the ventilation system in some of our schools need to be upgraded, and how do we put that in a long-term track? As Leon mentioned, from an infrastructure perspective, that is going to be critical.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a question from the audience again already. Cassie, would you like to read that?
Yes, so we have a question for all three of you. It's vital that government reflect the community it serves. How does your slate reflect West Hartford? And I'll let you, Libby, decide who goes where.
Yes, by order of assignment, it's Leon Davidoff's turn.
Thank you. Great question. If you look at the Democratic ticket on Town Council, you'll notice that we have three women, three men seeking office. We have two people of color. Our Board of Education has a member of color running as well. We have women candidates. I believe we have three women running. And our slate, and this isn't by accident, reflects the makeup of our community. Because we, as Democrats, understand that in order to govern and to lead a community, you have to look like our community. And not only are we gender and race diverse, we're also economically diverse as well. So I think that's quite important. And it just will bring better discussion to the table on a variety of issues that will come before either the Board of Education or the Town Council.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Mr. Merritt.
Thank you. While there are three men and one woman running as Town Council here, and we also have a gentleman running for Board of Ed who has young children in the school system, what I'm proud about is what we started here as an A Connecticut Party and the infrastructure that we have behind us and the vast diversity we have, both from a generational perspective. We also have folks of different colors and races that are also members of our back office team and helping us. And I'm excited about that. And while four of us are the front of what we're trying to create here and creating a more open and welcoming community, this is our first chance to actually share with the voters and our residents who we are, what we're standing for, as it relates to having a dialogue, solutions, ideas, and action.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Smith, Billingsmith, sorry.
It's okay. I echo, you know, what Leon says. You know, it has to be intentional. And when you're choosing the candidates that you want to represent your town, I think that the Democratic Party has done a great job of ensuring that we have diversity within our, on our team. So we have people of color, women. We have LGBTQI community being represented. We have income diversity. We're all spread out all over town, so we're hearing different voices. And when you have those voices at the table, you're doing what's best for your community and your residents. So I think you have to be very intentional about how you choose your team. And I appreciate the way that the Democratic Party leads, and I'm proud to be a part of that team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have a question about recycling. Do you think our recycling plans are up to date? Do you support applying, I'm sorry, what is your opinion regarding unit-based pricing? That is, paying a waste collection fee based on your usage? And this question will be started by Mr. Merritt.
Thank you, Libby, for the question. As it relates to the recycling, I think it's important that we took a look that everybody in our town has an opportunity to provide a little help for our environment. With all the rains and the flooding that we have seen over the last number of months, you know, we are, there is some climate change that's happening. And how do we all do our little part with recycling, helping educate on what needs to be recycled, what could be solid waste? As it relates to the unit-based pricing, I initially am skeptical of that, but I want to do more research for it and have a dialogue on how it affects all of our residents and all socioeconomic walks, and how that applies. Earlier, there was a comment about a transfer station. How would that, how would that work? How would it affect our town? Where would we be putting that transfer station? So I think it's an interesting conversation that we need to have because climate is happening. And we need to understand that the science is there about it and how we all do our little part in doing that one. Neighbors, brown bins, the pink bags, and maybe more recycling pickup. But I know from historical perspective, having it every week, it really did not mean a lot. But maybe with more education, having recycling picked up weekly, that could maybe put a dent in what we're doing here. But costs are going up as it relates to solid waste. Talked to a number of town planners, and it's something that they're grappling with, and we need to address it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to chime in? What about the support for the state's sustainability grants, try new disposal or recycling markets? Is that an option?
I would look at the details and what strings come attached with it, and then how is it applied? And again, that's kind of a conversation that we just need to have. I'd love to have that with Leon and Adrian and the rest of the team at the committee level to really work it out and have ideas and solutions that we can put into action, right? So we want to come at this together and how we work at it together and find common ground.
Okay, thank you again. Any comments from either Mrs. Davidoff or Mrs. Billingsmith?
Nobody wants to pick up the recycling question?
Nobody wants to pick it up. I guess not. Okay, we'll move on then. Cassie, do you have another question?
No, not at this time.
Okay, great. All right. What is your thinking on a balance of affordable housing versus market rate housing in town? Consider rental and homeownership. What role does zoning or should zoning have a part in this? We're going to start with Ms. Billingsmith.
Um, I think that affordable housing is an issue that we have to deal with. We have multiple types of housing within West Hartford, multifamily zoning, single-family zoning. And I think that we continue to try to do our best. There's always room to grow and to collaborate to do better for our residents. And we want people to continue to move to West Hartford. So making sure that we do have mixed-income housing is important. And I hope that we can do some things to help ensure that we're getting new buyers and helping even our buyers that are aging out with the ADU ordinance that was passed, who want to be in a smaller place but still need to generate income. I think that affordable housing is an issue that has to be discussed, and we just have to be creative and intentional in the ways that we go forward in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on affordable housing? Mr. Merritt, you have your hand up first.
I did. I beat Leon to the punch on that one. I think what it comes down to is how do we help develop areas of our town to help provide more housing and more housing ability? With regards to, you know, One Park, for example, that's an opportunity for us to have more homeownership or apartments in an area of town to help develop that one from a small business perspective, but also an influx of revenue. I know it was a topic, a heated topic of conversation about it, but it was a property that was not generating any revenue to the town, and then it will generate revenue to the town forever, right? So after everything's there and it has, the private developers are committed to making workplace housing available. There's other couple of developers looking at property here, parcels that will be multi-use. They're also wanting to have workplace housing that's available there. And I want us also to have that conversation about where they strategically, we can look at things. Now that we have the community center that we're moving forward with, which I fully supported, record of wanting to have that going up. And then how do we look at parcels of land for private development? Again, to make it an area of town that we can look at for development. And that is kind of what I would like to do from an economic development perspective, to help with regards to housing and affordability, having more people here. All our prices have been going up because of people moving into town. And also with regards with that, how do we help manage that from our infrastructure perspective? So we need to have structural conversations too about that as we continue to grow as a town.
Thank you. Mr. Davidoff, you had your hand up also?
Thank you. I would concur with a lot that Adrian and Mark have mentioned. West Hartford is a very welcoming and attractive community to raise a family. People want to be in our community. As a fully-developed community in terms of landmass, what's going to be very important is the redevelopment opportunities that present themselves, whether it be in partnership with the government or with nonprofit organizations or even private developers. And when one looked at the One Park proposal in particular, we had the Sisters of St. Joseph who were, who wanted to stay at their parcel, age in place there, but they knew that their parcel was too big for them, and a great opportunity presented itself with respect to bringing in rental properties. And there's going to be, on that particular parcel, market rate apartments for ten years. And there's other developments in town that are also considering things like that. And there will be more to come in the next term of the council. While we have a lot of single-family homes, multifamily homes, apartments, condominiums, mansions, we all get together and we all want to be here. And I think that's the common theme. It's how do we accomplish that? And I think through reasonable, common sense discussions, we will be a welcoming place for everyone regardless of their ability to earn income. That's what makes our community so special.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, let's move on to digital life. The pandemic wrought to life how critical it is to have good infrastructure within town. Do our residents have equal access to digital resources, students, job hunters, seniors? And what is the role of the Town Council regarding such access? And this question goes to Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you for the question. Great question. I would argue that we definitely have a digital divide in our town. That was apparent when our school system was able to provide Chromebooks to all our students. But a lot of students didn't have internet access. And a lot of people in our community still don't have Wi-Fi access. And that's a challenge that we are going to have to meet so that regardless of your income or where you live in town, Wi-Fi is readily accessible. We're not a rural community. We are a suburban ring of our capital city. And in 2021, the internet and digital activity are paramount to our lifestyle. So it is really incumbent upon us to make certain that we don't leave behind any of our residents regardless of where they are on the age spectrum or the income spectrum. So I believe that some of the Rescue Plan dollars will probably be committed to ensuring that we improve our access to digital capabilities.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I think one part, if I can, is why don't we look at certain areas of our town, that city centers, we'll call them, or town centers, and provide free Wi-Fi? You know, there's a number of companies that have provided that for a number of communities. I've been blessed to travel the country and see how this has been working in certain markets and communities like ours, that free Wi-Fi is, you know, maybe Bishop's Corner. Maybe it's in Elmwood. Maybe it's, maybe it's all of these places where we can utilize this on an ongoing basis to provide free Wi-Fi to certain areas of the town to help broaden that reach.
Thank you very much.
I just want to second what Leon said. We do have a digital divide based on income and where folks live. And we are in a suburban area, and we're in a thriving town. So I think it's incumbent of us to make sure that we're providing those sorts of services to our community, you know, and using some of that funding to ensure that we don't have that again. You know, something happens and our children have to go back. You know, God forbid, we have to go back into, you know, schooling from home. We want our children to have those opportunities and not feel secluded from their classmates any more than they already are. So I think it's really important that we start to have that discussion and we put some money toward that. And as Mr. Merritt said, you know, there are thriving communities that have free Wi-Fi. So I think there just has to be a discussion that's had so we can bring all of our ideas together and do what's best for West Hartford.
Thank you. Okay, we had a question from the previous session or from one of our other sessions regarding the town's infrastructure in regard to town buildings, schools, municipal buildings. Is it time to evaluate consolidation? We'll start with Mr. Merritt.
Thank you, I guess, because my counterpart started that conversation in the previous session. So I think it's important for us to have a dialogue on the lifespan of our municipal buildings. You know, we've talked about it recently with the Mayflower purchase and creating a potential community center. The Elmwood Community Center has been fantastic, but it is well over 100 years old. And how much more do you spend into maintaining that and maybe leveraging that parcel for development again? And then the folks from the Faxton Library were very supportive of doing the community center. Again, that parcel, then, how do we evaluate the lifespan and how much money? I go back to the movie Money Pit. So how much of that do we want to continue putting into buildings? Or we can modernize that can have a building that would last for years? So part of it is having a discussion, putting stuff and ideas on the table, not always responding in a negative way to ideas or solutions, but how do we put a dialogue together to talk about it that's going to be beneficial for the entire town, not just for the next two, three years, but how about 10, 15, 50 years? And so I do think that we should look at consolidation and going through the buildings based on their lifespan.
Thank you. Any other comments? No, okay.
No one's going to pick up that rail.
No. Oh, well, Ms. Billingsmith.
I was just going to say, I come from a town where we had the two high schools and it was the best of both, you know, it was the best of the town. And being a parent of a West Hartford student, you know, we love the smaller. We moved here for the education, right? That's why we come. That's how we get people here, because we have the best schools in the state. And our two high schools are top 10 in our county and our nation. So I think that, I don't know that it would be the best decision to consolidate. I mean, we have our capital improvement plan that we evaluate this every year. People who are doing the job, the town and other employees, to ensure that our children are in safe facilities, and we're doing our best for upkeep. I'm sure there's more that can be done, but I think, you know, consolidating is not just about the building or the campus. It's about the students that are going there and like that. They like that, their high school pride. So I think we have to take that in consideration also. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I get a time in from the timers, where we stand?
Yes, I have Mr. Davidoff at five minutes used. I have Ms. Billingsmith at four minutes 30 seconds used. And Mr. Merritt at five minutes 40 seconds used.
Okay, great. We have plenty of time. Let's keep going. Last year's election saw some changes into the way in how we vote. Going forward, do you think that the town has resources to manage more changes? You know, the state government picked up a lot of what needed to be done as far as expanding the capability of what we would call mail-in voting. Call it what you like. But do we have the resources to go forward and expand our voting system? This question will go to Ms. Billingsmith.
So I would hope that we have the resources to continue to provide mail-in ballots, as you said, or absentee ballots and those facilities, those drop boxes. I think they're really important to our democracy. They're important to voting. I'm not a part of the budget process at the moment, but it's something that I would definitely advocate for to ensure that our voters are free to vote in any way that they deem necessary and essential, especially because we don't know. Each day, things change. And we're still in a pandemic right now. So I think it's something that we just have to continue to reevaluate as we move forward.
Thank you. Gentlemen, Mr. Davidoff.
I think it's paramount that voters be given the opportunity to vote in a safe way. And as this pandemic has shown us, absentee voting was a successful solution. A lot of the dollars for that voting process came from the state of Connecticut last time. And municipalities are always struggling for dollars to provide that same thing. So it would be interesting to see whether or not our legislature would provide the necessary funding, not only for the mail-in ballots, but also for the workforce necessary to process those ballots, whether it be in the town clerk's office or assistance in the register or voter's office.
Thank you. Mr. Merritt, any comment?
I agree with both of them. Every vote matters. Every vote should count. And whatever way we can do to make sure every citizen votes, I'm all for it.
Okay. Moving on to the next question, and we will start with Mr. Davidoff. Do you have any concerns for West Hartford regarding the impact of potential redistricting plans being worked on that are a result of the 2020 census? Mr. Davidoff.
I really don't. I think that our legislators representing West Hartford are capable representatives, and they will make certain that they take the necessary steps to make certain that our community is well-represented in the legislature.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I got one last question for you, and we'll start with a yes or no. Mr. Merritt, you're going to start it. Cannabis, should West Hartford allow a retail shop? That's part one. The second part is, by statute, West Hartford must allow a space for consumption. How do we decide where to put it? That's Mr. Merritt.
Thank you. I did put out a commentary on that based on one of the questions. And what I will say is, I think we need to take a measured approach in having one and making sure it's in a location that we need to look at. I also think we should have a lot of community input on this, both from a dispensary as well as open space. I know the statute allows for that, if you have that. But I think we need the community involvement, a lot of public forums, to be able to get vast opinions on that. I think, you know, when I put cannabis along the lines, we don't have a space for open containers for alcohol. And so I think there is a couple of things that we need to look at and discuss as a town and also getting input from the residents itself. It's not a clear-cut and dry. It's been approved for that. And I just want to make sure we do it in a right way that benefits all of West Hartford and that it's a safe environment for that.
Thank you. More comment? Okay, you were brave to take that one on.
You gave me no choice for that one.
Well, that's true. That's true. I did. My apologies. We'll throw you something somewhere here. Okay, let's, do we still have more time? You guys have gone through nine questions. You're ripping right through them. You're doing really well. Let's see, can we do? Is PFCs a concern in West Hartford? They seem to be creeping into the groundwater in surrounding communities. At what point do we need to stand up and really take notice? PFCs, did I say?
I'm sorry, Libby, I didn't catch the first part of that.
PFCs, the perfluoro carbons, the forever pollutants that are popping up in the wells in the state. At what point does West Hartford need to stand up and take notice? I know we are not exactly on a well system, but it seems to be pervasive in the area. And when do we need to stand up and take notice? That would be Ms. Billingsmith.
I wasn't expecting that question.
No, I know.
I, you know, I think it's important to evaluate, obviously. Right now, the town is working on ensuring that, you know, we're I'm so sorry, you know, evaluating the safety of our water, dealing with stormwater issues. I think that funding is being used to probably run reports on that sort of thing. That's nothing, that isn't something that I'm very familiar with at the moment. But I would assume that West Hartford, if it's needed, then the leadership of West Hartford is making sure that we're at least researching and evaluating the situation. And I would hope to be a part of that also, if that's an issue that we need to be dealing with right now.
Thank you. Mr. Davidoff, is this on town council's radar? Is the permanent pollutants on town council's reservoir, is there a resolution? Is there?
To be honest with you, we have not discussed this in any committee meeting that I've gone to. But I am certain though, if need be, we would be definitely proactive and responsive.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, something.
On that note, I think the best person from my team would be Rick Bush, who will be in the next session. Right? He's been very actively involved. He's an MDC commissioner, but he has been also firsthand knowledge of what happens with storm water and also sewage with regards to that. And he has been really actively involved in looking at that. We do have an infrastructure problem when it comes to that. So he would be the best person to maybe address that.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have time for one more question? I'm asking our monitors. Jan? Okay, Cass, go ahead.
All right, so we have one that really relates to a lot of the previous questions in several ways. But in a few seconds, let's say, you know, a minute or 30 seconds. What are your plans for the Yukon West Hartford branch property? That's been sitting there, if any, and how does this benefit West Hartford? So I'll let you decide. You goes first.
I believe that would be Mr. Davidoff.
Great question. So I'll just fast forward to where we are today. It's my understanding that Fintech has been in negotiations with a private entity to sell the parcel to them. They're currently doing their due diligence. And we'll see hopefully by the end of the year whether or not that property will be transferred. As one knows, the town did not purchase that property when the opportunity presented itself because of concerns over environmental risk. So right now, the property is in the hands of private individuals and the town is not a party to that transaction, even though we are encouraging them to reach a resolution that will be in the best interest of our community.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Merritt.
I think, you know, working with the potential new owners of that property, how do we, how do we put a vision in place to make sure that we secure the Miracle League field and Little League fields and expand more open space on the east side of Troutbrook? I've been very active in talking about that with residents while door knocking. Is how do we have a vision for that? Maybe we'll approach them if we are financially able to acquire that land and making it more of an open space and adding on to the Miracle League fields and Little League fields there as more of a community space. And that could range with a number of different things, multi-use field, maybe a dog park, something like that, that would be more open space for that east side of Troutbrook. And, but again, that will have to be something that we need to decide as a town if we can financially and fiscally be able to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Billingsmith, anything to add?
No, I just want to ensure that the corporation that is there or takes over the Yukon property is, puts West Hartford, it's for West Hartford's best interest and the vision is for the community of West Hartford.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will draw this portion of the program to a close and move on to our closing statements. Mr. Merritt, you went last in the questioning. That means you go first on the closing statements. Timers, give everybody two minutes, please. I think you can start when you're ready.
Yeah, thank you to League of Women Voters of Greater Hartford, as well as WHCI TV for the opportunity again to talk with the community and our neighbors about a Connecticut Party, myself and our vision for the town. You know, I've been proud to call West Hartford my home for the past 28 years and have been lucky enough to raise three children here in town with my wife, Mike Lee. And I've taken an active role in our community from reaching, from coaching youth sports, volunteering in our school system, public school system, an active member of our Jewish community, as well as serving the community at large. I enjoy giving back and helping others. That is why I am running for town council. My professional career has been in the financial services industry, working together with people in a collaborative environment to help businesses meet their many challenges in a sometimes difficult economy. I currently work as head of distribution for a startup, so I understand the power of a startup, but also the challenges that comes with that to help address and look at a number of different things with our community and asking questions and looking at alternatives and solutions. And then while I look at my three children and I think about their future in our town, it's clear why I am running, because I want them to have the same opportunities that I've had, that my wife and I have had to raise them and earn a living, but also enjoy the diverse community that we have. This is why also I started a Connecticut Party. A Connecticut Party reflects fiscal conservative values and promotes dialogue on our social issues as you probably have seen here tonight. You know, we're not going to be beholden to any party ideology. We want to come up with solutions and ideas and we want to put things into action. We want to work with folks to help address quality of life initiatives, economic and business development, safety and security concerns, as well as we want to financially modernize how we are looking at our budgets and our future. As I mentioned, our community is diverse and engaged, requires an alternative view on how we should approach governing. And we want to hear from everybody. The current dynamics of our national and state political landscape needs a break from political divide. And to have a voice that is based on moderate perspectives, conversations, respect, and it's something that we can create unity. We created a rational alternative for you folks in the town of West Hartford. I hope you will join our cause, make West Hartford the town we know we all can be, and I ask for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you again for everybody and thank you for participating.
Thank you. Mr. Davidoff, your closing remarks, please.
I'd first like to thank all the candidates who have stepped up this election cycle to run. It's great to see such engagement in a community such as ours. People ask me, why am I running again? And the answer is quite simple. I just truly enjoy serving our community. Throughout the pandemic, as the deputy mayor, I actively participated in council discussions and decisions to address the well-being of our community. I'm grateful to the efforts of our first responders, our teachers, our essential workers, as well as all the community leaders who work together. Because of the pandemic, there's still work to be done that requires knowledgeable, steady and experienced leadership. I am prepared, committed and eager to meet this challenge. West Hartford is a diverse, welcoming and vibrant community. Our property values remain high and our town is the best place to live, to work and to raise a family. You can count on me to demonstrate steady leadership, good governance and fiscal responsibility. I take pride in being a good listener, arriving prepared for meetings, whether they be in person or on WebEx, and actively participating in the discussions at the council table. I'm proud of the strong working relationships that I have built with town staff and my colleagues. My priorities are your priorities. I will continue to support budgets that maintain services and programs such as excellent, award-winning schools, fantastic recreational programs, outstanding libraries and senior centers and professional public safety services. During this pandemic, we witness how important all these services and programs are to our community. My well-reasoned approach to the issues that the council faces will continue to be necessary as our community addresses the social and economic impact of the pandemic. My years of experience, coupled with my dedication and leadership skills, uniquely qualify me to continue serving on our town council. On November 2nd, please vote for me, Leon Davidoff, so I can continue to make a great town even better and the entire Democratic team so that we can be responsible, responsive and ready to lead our community in the next two years. Thank you for this opportunity from the League of Women Voters and for WHCI for allowing us to express our viewpoints to our very engaged and informed West Hartford electorate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Billingsmith, your closing argument, please.
Thank you. I want to again say thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the other panelists and of course, the residents of West Hartford for giving us your time tonight. I am proud to be joining a team that has done an excellent job governing during a pandemic, ensuring that our families are safe and our businesses have had the ability to stay open, all while doing its best to uphold the values when it comes to education, diversity and inclusion, and continuing to ensure that our town budget is used and allocated to what is best in terms of services and programs for West Hartford. I'm running for town council because I believe I can help to move our town toward those goals and values, specifically continue to stay people and community focused when deciding on policies and making sure they meet the goal of equity and equality and by ensuring our residents from New Britain Ave to my little corner of West Hartford feel seen, heard and represented in our decisions. That includes how our budget is allocated, whether that be the services and programs we provide for our citizens, helping small businesses continue to thrive and ensuring we are being innovative when it comes to town improvements. My family and I moved to West Hartford because we wanted to ensure our children have the best education while also ensuring they were living in a diverse, safe and welcoming community. Over the last eight years, I have been proud to call West Hartford my home. I have involved myself in the community from PTO to town appointments, most recently the Civilian Police Review Board and starting my own organization to ensure those very values are a reality for my child and my family. I believe in the power of working together. When we all work together, we benefit from different perspectives. Even when we disagree, that still creates strong partnerships and relationships and helps build a better town because of voices and concerns of our community are being respected. I like a lot of folks that I've spoken to while canvassing want safe neighborhoods, vibrant commercial centers, livable wages, affordable housing options, support for our public servants and even the ability to share the roadway with bikers. And of course, most importantly, continuing to have the best schools in Connecticut. There's nothing that we cannot do together. And if you believe in those things, then row A is your team of candidates. I ask you for your vote November 2nd and wish you nothing but the best and thank you.
Thank you very much. Want to thank all the candidates for their time, their responses and their patience throughout this debate. We hope this debate assists you, the voting public, when you go to the polls on Election Day, November 2nd. All four town council debates, along with a Board of Education debate, will be available on WHCTV, WHCI during the month of October and on their YouTube channel. Go to WHCTV.org. Also, visit the League's website to get to know your candidates better. They will have biographies as well as answers to some written questions that were submitted to them. You can also find out about your registration and where you are scheduled to vote. And you can also file for an absentee ballot there. The Secretary of the State offers a website and the Town Register also has sites. And you can go to myvote.c t.gov/lookup. I want to thank everybody again, timers and candidates and technical staff, and I bid you good day.